Okay, it's Wednesday, August 8th, 2018. Paul Ameen to order, please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
On and on board.
Okay, you know, I think we're gonna shift stuff around because we've got a bunch of people in here and they've gotta go back to work, so we have a resolution for the retirement of Bill Vance. Whereas on July 19th, 2009, William Bill Vance began his career working for Cole County EMS. And whereas Bill has been a dedicated employee for the Cole County EMS department directors, including Mike Schurz, Jerry Johnson, Matt Lindarworth. And whereas prior to joining Cole County EMS, Bill was employed by the Miller County EMS, Phelps County Regional Medical Center. And whereas while performing his duties as a paramedic and supervisor, he directed and indirectly influenced the care and treatment of thousands of residents. And there's a bunch of other wherees's there, but I don't think, it just says you walk no water. Thank you for everything.
Get the whole crew up here? Let the rest of the group get up here. You just want to borrow the mugs. If one of us, then I'm gonna get yours.
Stand on the chair, Debbie. Some of you could come up behind, I guess.
Are you, you're in the back?
Yeah.
Behind Chris is Brian.
Yeah.
So where's the mayor? She should be here for herself.
Okay, so thank you very much.
Dr. Looney, while you're here.
Hey, why don't you guys?
Hold on, say, we wanna recognize.
Now, we're gonna... Oh, no. For those who don't know, Dr. Charles Looney's been our medical director with EMS. He's a pretty good guy, so we just wanted to...
I don't know, you shouldn't say that in front of all these.
No, no, he received the Director, let's see, Missouri EMS Medical Director of the Year award by the Missouri Emergency Medical Services Association.
Hard to say, you know.
Yes. We just want to thank you for everything you're doing and just keep doing it.
Thank you.
Thank you. And see, this will be valuable someday because we all three signed it.
We're taking a picture.
I got their signatures now.
Go and practice them.
Yeah, I was saying, you're better at signing than John is.
What do we need that over there? Budge items coming up.
Thank you all.
Yep, thanks, guys, for coming in.
Yeah, I know, yeah. That's good.
All right, is that it? We're done?
Minutes on reports received and filed.
We have Sheriff's July 2018 fees and the clerk July 2018 fees and recorder's July 2018 fees filed.
Okay. Commissioner Committee liaison reports, upcoming meetings and events.
Home Builders Association meeting tonight. None of us really qualify, but the young professionals with Chamber, they have a social tomorrow night. Chief's Association meeting tomorrow night. We've got Eastside Coffee Friday. Chamber of Commerce Friday Coffee. Radio Friday. Lincoln University Blue Tiger Athletic Club Casino Night Saturday night. And I think they're down to about 25 tickets left, so if you're not going and you're interested, you can get hold of me or just go to Lincoln University.
When's that, Friday?
Saturday night. Yep, dinner, and then they'll have an auction, and then they have a casino night. It's a good time, so support our university here. That's about it till next meeting, then.
So, we're meeting with Wall Street today for health insurance review. Debbie and I are at Wall Street. And then, who's doing radio?
Well, John said it's your turn.
Okay.
So...
Is he gonna be nice?
What are you doing on the radio?
I'm just asking.
Huh, Friday?
Friday.
Do you call in?
Okay, thanks.
John's always nice.
Hey, I'll throw it right back at you.
I know you will.
Sheriff's wasting all kinds of money.
Carrying around more than one bullet.
I'm just kidding. We gotta slip to American meeting on Monday.
Okay.
Are you still fine being on that board? Because I know I threw you on there six years ago.
I guess we may have to find a new director, so...
That's what I heard.
Yeah, so, anyway, we'll see.
Well, if you're still fine serving on it, because I got off of it because I like having July 4th to do my own stuff, and I didn't want you being stuck with it every year. I was gonna throw Sam under the bus and tell it's his turn. No, but if you want off of it, it's not gonna happen.
Okay, no, I'm good now.
Okay, good.
I had everything down. Friday night, too, the, I've got a Military Ball Gala at Capitol Plaza. Saturday night, Little Theater, they're doing Mary Poppins this week, so we're going to play with Hal Dooley. Monday afternoon, I've got a meeting with Governor Parson and Lieutenant Governor Keough. And then Tuesday, we got meetings, so that's all I've got. Okay. Appointments by Commission, appointment of Sonny Youngmeyer to the Cole County Planning Commission. And I think this is something you had, yeah, had done, so he is willing to serve again, so we have a...
He's a new member.
Oh, is he a new member? Okay. Okay.
And we had a replacement, Dick Pearson?
Marley Kessler has to be taken off.
Didn't Dick just come off here and not go on back to?
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'm good with it.
Yep.
You guys good?
Yep.
Maybe that we appoint Marvin Sonny Youngmeyer to the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Not the planning and zoning?
That's what it says on here.
Oh, we don't have zoning.
Planning Commission.
Okay, second.
I understand you said, uh...
All in favor?
Aye. Sorry, it's Wednesday, I've had an extra day to build up here, so...
Okay. Bids and contracts, 2017-31 R1 CCLEC Food Service Renewal 1.
Sheriff's Department would like to renew with Trinity. They do have an increase. It's roughly about 11% or $26,500 a year, but obviously that's gonna be dependent on the population. They're doing a good job for you, you're happy for them. I don't know if you have anything to say or any questions, but...
Do we have a renewal 2 then, or is there an increase on it, or, I mean, obviously this is renewal 1, is there...
It's year by year, they reevaluate and then offer an increase that we can accept or reject.
Okay, and what's the percent increase on this one?
It's different for each breakdown of the population, it's about 11.3%, roughly.
About 16 cents a mil.
You were emailing us about it, right, John? I think everything looked like it was running right along the lines and you were happy with it?
Yeah, we're happy with it this year, we'll see how it progresses this year. If we have issues, then we'll have to bid next year.
Okay, you guys good?
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Two originals.
I'll probably get friends here.
I move that we approve and sign the agreement with Training Services for the renewal for food services.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. DevNet's amendment to their contract.
This amendment number two is adding Marshall and Swift Cost Service Analysis back in for residential real estate appraisals. It was in the original contract, we had removed because we were gonna try to go with the cost basis that the assessor's office currently uses. Clear Basin software would never provide us with the cost basis figures and the rules, so we had to go back and put Marshall and Swift back in as a service to use. There's two of these, one for the county, and one to go back to DevNet.
It's a cost.
It's all in there, I don't, whatever originally, we actually originally agreed to, so...
Okay.
There's no increase from the original contract, it's just whatever we took out, we put back in.
So there's no increase in cost, or, or there is a...
There's no increase from the original, we went, we did the first amendment, it was a reduction in cost. This is just adding that back in, so it's back, actually back to where, what was originally approved by the commission.
Okay. How are we coming on everything?
I think the personal property...
Personal property is up and running, we've been running it for quite some time. All of them basically totally on personal property. Real estate, they put everything in this week, and they're coming in, Bob's coming in today, actually, to start the training sessions, so that should be going on.
Any big issues or problems or anything?
Well, I mean, there are some issues, we're working through them.
Sure.
It's, I think it's going rather smooth. We did do our end of the year with DevNet, and it went a lot smoother this year than it has with Clear Basin.
Good.
Our totals were much better.
You were down to the penny or something, were you? Or was that a different report?
That was a different report, but the Farm 11 is the first report that the clerk has to provide, and that comes from all, or actually, the Farm 11 comes from the assessor's office, that's all the assessive I use. That from the, before BOE and that, everything balanced to the penny there.
Good.
Without some of the issues that we had in the past.
Okay. Questions?
Yes.
You guys good?
Good. Yeah, you're fine with it.
I feel that this is going to be a better, better for us, because if someone does come and asks where we got those figures for their home, you know, their increase or the value for their home, we can actually go back and use Marshall Swift and say, this is where those totals came from, we're using this as a guideline. Where before, we just had those figures plugged in there, there was no one actually there to back us up as to how those figures got there, so I do feel that Marshall Swift will be better.
This is a national database, and they use local...
Yes.
...information, too?
Yes.
Good. I move that we approve and sign amendment number two with DevNet.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Do we have any unfinished business? Okay, council payable review?
We don't have any council payables.
Excellent. Okay. Aggrady County designation.
Who's doing that?
I have it right here.
Oh, that's just us.
Yeah. Aggrady County designation renewal, and we, we're in Aggrady County, so it's a program of Missouri Farmers Care, partners with counties that actively support Missouri agriculture. County commissions apply to be designated as an Aggrady County, renew their partnership agreement biannually. The Aggrady partnership is voluntary, no cost, and this just says we wish to renew our Missouri Farmers Care Aggrady designation, so we all sign it, send it back to them.
He hasn't signed it yet, Larry.
Yeah.
So we need to approve that?
Yeah.
I move that we approve and sign the Aggrady County designation.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, and I see Christie's here now, so we, we were gonna move you way down, but, yeah. The Health Department Building Renovations Discussion.
Is this what y'all emailed us yesterday?
Well, and then we just got something this morning from the Cosmo Club, they have their, the design for their sign. They want, so if you wanted to approve that before they had BC make it. Did you wanna pull up your spreadsheet, or do they all have it? Jennifer, I forwarded her this morning.
Yeah.
She was able to print it for you. Did you get printed? So in addition to the sign, we also met with them yesterday, they have the design for the kitchen in the training room ready. They were gonna go out and meet with the countertop company, and then decide if they needed to get new cabinets or decide, decide which cabinets to do based on what countertop was available outside.
And you guys have what they proposed? If that's okay with you, then move forward with that.
As far as countertops, did you guys, did you send that to everybody, Christie?
I said the proposal.
What's the question? I didn't hear it.
He said the countertops, but I don't, I didn't hear back from Eric yesterday whether or not they were able to get countertops from the one company or not.
So they're gonna use that existing sign to, the one that we weren't gonna use?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. You guys good with that?
I think it's great.
Mm-hmm.
I appreciate them participating.
You can have all these.
Giving them, so...
They're...
Get their name out there, I think that's awesome.
Yeah, we're very excited about the partnership.
Did you happen to bring those, just the layouts of the countertops and stuff?
I mean, here's the, the facts, yeah, the facts, the...
You guys have everything on your handout that I just gave you.
Oh, okay.
The scanned one is not.
I got you, I got you.
So we met with Eric Burkett yesterday, and these are kind of some rough layouts. New stove, new refrigerator, new microwave, they're gonna provide all that, new...
Yeah, they're taking the bar that's there and moving it out 30 inches, so we'll be able to have people work all the way around when we have classes, and they're putting a stove and a three-vat sink there. And it's gonna be like a five-foot island, so we can, we teach classes, everyone can stand around and do food prep.
Basically, new countertops, so that, that's a tentative layout of what they're wanting to do. We just need to move on this if we want them to keep moving forward.
All right.
About the only thing that we don't have is colors, and, and he was basically talking, you know, either something fairly neutral or a black for cabinets, and then possibly a gray or a white quartz, a quartz top or something similar, so... Anyway, I know Jeff likes to pick colors, so...
I do, but since they're paying for it, it can be poking off.
No, I'm very appreciative, I think this is...
Yeah, I don't, I don't really care what color it is, I mean, if it fits in with the scheme of things.
Yeah.
I'd let them run with it and keep it moving.
I think they were trying to get a remnant, of course, so to see what was available.
Yeah.
No, I've...
I think this is awesome.
Okay, I think so. So you're okay with all of that, I'll let them know? And he, we asked about timeline, he said he hoped to get it done yet in August, so he didn't really think it would take very long once they had the materials.
So you guys good with the countertops and the sign?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
I think...
We can actually see some signs up there now, too, somebody got some brush out of the way.
Yeah.
We need a motion on that, or probably?
I don't think we really need a motion on that, just an informal go-ahead, I think it's fine.
Okay.
Good.
Yeah, just keep moving and...
Okay. The next thing in the pile is, you saw my email, we're very excited that we got approval from DHS and USDA that WIC is gonna pay for a portion of the renovations to the building. They calculated that WIC comprises 30.6% of the program occupied area, so for the cost that we laid out to them, they'll pay 30% of it. So, once we have all the bills, we will send it to them. Well, they'll send us a contract amendment, then we'll send the bills, and they'll send us the money. The only project that we had listed on there that we hadn't decided whether we're gonna really do or not was the parking lot milling and resurface. So if we wanna get the 14, 382, we need to spend the 47, basically. And then we'll have to talk about the signs in a minute, but if you wanna talk about the parking lot first.
With that, well, with that share of the money, does that take us back down to closer with what we had in budget? And then free up an extra?
Oh, yeah.
Then we put the spreadsheet.
Free's up quite a bit, I couldn't really understand Debbie's spreadsheeter, but...
So we then, would we have the $33,000 to make up?
Sorry, Debbie. Yeah, we, so basically, take, take our total here, didn't it take the 268 less? Well, our total went up because of the 47, right?
That's right, I went ahead and put that in.
Okay, so that take, it took us to 268, then you take the 82 off of that, is that right?
That's right.
So you're down at about...
So, okay, 'cause I mean, it's...
180.
Then that's gonna have us within our budget.
Yeah.
So I'd say go ahead and go with it, get it done.
Okay.
Have it done, I mean, I, I mean, it's not a bargain if you don't have the money, but...
Right.
This, to be able to take advantage of that right now and to keep it all on the budget, yeah, I think we're in good shape.
Okay.
We're about at 219 with all those things, but there's still some question about, there's two things still out to bid. And there's, we're doing either one of these, not doing both, but we don't know which one yet, so 220, 219 right now.
Okay.
Which is better than what we've been starting with?
Yeah. Yeah, that was a good email.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah.
It's kinda like the sales tax being up on Fridays are good emails, Debbie. If they're down, you ain't till Monday. I'm just teasing.
The only other line that might change a little bit, on the new sign and door lettering, we had submitted 8176, well, we had chosen not to do that middle sign, right? But we did get a cost for moving the existing signs from our building to the new building, so...
I don't think I put that in there, did I?
So I think that, well, it's according to Debbie's spreadsheet, for the signs, we approved 6550. Is it all three of those?
Well, I added this one this morning, correct? Thought it was gonna be about 850, whatever you were looking at.
Well, it was, until we asked about, he was able to put that sign across the front, so it's gonna be 1281. So that brings us about, back up to, it's 8,000, so we'll get, we'll submit the 8,000, and we'll still get about 2,500 back, so all in all, our signs will still be about 8,000.
It's actually 1,200, Debbie, because we don't need that permit, remember?
Oh, yeah, we don't need the permit.
Just a little bit, hey?
Okay.
So, did you, did you give him a copy of this? So, it kinda shows what he proposed with moving the signs, which I think putting one out there on that carport thing will really be visible from West Truman, and then we just need to decide whether we want the round one up on the top or down on the building.
Yeah, there were some rebates that we realized for some of our energy efficiencies. You guys good with those signs?
Yeah.
Moving those signs?
Do you want it on the, up on the top or down on the building?
4,200?
I like the one up on top, I think it's more visible.
Okay.
But, what did you like?
It doesn't matter.
You've been out there a lot more, so I just think it's more visible up on top.
Right, I think so.
I think either place will look fun, so...
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, if you run into problems with it up there, just switch it down below.
So did we decide to go ahead with the parking lot?
Yes.
100%? Are we good?
Well, are we good? Public Works, Eric had put out a bid that we can piggyback off of with Jefferson Asphalt, so are we good with that approach and that way?
Yeah, if we could, if we could piggyback on our mill and paving for that job, or, are we gonna be able to do that, or not?
Yeah, Jill had looked at it, approved it, and I had talked to Eric, and he had sent me some information, so we should be good to do it.
Yeah, he can run it off, or, I mean, we would, it'd actually be cheaper, probably, doing the bill and then us all in the mix doing it.
But I mean, can it run under that previous bid? Okay. So we don't need to bid it?
Right, and that's, as long as you don't want to for some reason.
No.
Do you need a vote or anything on that, or are we good?
No, just a go-ahead.
Yep.
Go.
Go.
The only other thing I wanted to bring up was...
You said the only other thing right before this.
I know, and then I looked at my list, again. Moving, you know, we, I think that we'll be able to, you know, start moving things out of ESP sooner because the flooring is moving right along, and, but we, I know, don't knock on wood, they're doing really well.
Don't.
Don't jinx it.
Don't say it.
Yeah, but that 27th and 28th that we want to be, we have to be closed because they're moving our switch and our server, we would like to explore the option of having a moving company move the larger items and take care of the rest, just to be expedited, and because there's a lot of larger items downstairs, like the exam tables and those Helmer vaccine refrigerators, having a company that's licensed and insured and has the proper equipment would, I think, be really good for all of us. I think Jennifer found a...
There's a state bid, yeah, it's in your packet, the last, but there is a state bid out there, and I think it was like $22 an hour, if you guys are interested in going that rate, we might be able to have them kinda look at what we have and give us maybe a more concrete bottom line, but the information I have is in front of you. Per person.
Yeah, if we could use a local vendor, and they're, looks like they're cheapest. Least expensive.
Yeah, we have less liability, too.
Yeah.
If we have somebody like the football team come over and they get hurt or break something, then it's just, it's almost better off just doing it this route.
Well, and they would only be able to do it on the weekend, if we're close, those two days, we might as well get everything done and moved and...
I would help, but I got to...
Wash your hair.
I got babysit or something. I think it's something.
And I'm helping, Jeff.
I'm watching you.
Yeah.
Silver City.
Oh, my God.
Oh, God.
Don't steal that.
Senior care, senior care.
Those refrigerators downstairs are pretty good.
All right, what else we need?
You guys are okay, we can go forward, then contact that company to give us an estimate, and then email you to be available, to make sure you guys are still okay, or...
Did we have something in the budget for that? Maybe we have an idea?
We had a question mark. Um, we had a question mark.
We had some, uh, F F and E, right?
Yeah, but...
Yes.
Right, but we had it in there, didn't we?
Yeah, we had nine thousand, but I don't, yeah, I don't think we're gonna spend that. I think the, the things that we're, we're gonna buy, um, we're able to take it out of other budget lines. I don't think we're gonna use that nine thousand F F and E.
Sign us some more grants. We like that. You got over a hundred thousand you got for us, so.
I'd just get more solid price for us and email us and then we can just say, "Go ahead." Or we can do a not exceed price, but I don't know where it's gonna be at.
Someone will have to show them.
Yeah, we'll have to give an estimate.
What you wanna, what you want to move.
Okay.
And look at E S B, yeah, move it on. Okay. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Hey, Christie, did you, Christie, can you give those attachments to the...
Yeah, I gave them.
Oh, you get them all?
I increased their budget by the same amount.
Okay, okay.
Perfect, thank you.
Century Link InformaCast renewal.
So, so Debbie, you said to increase their budget by that grant. So does that have to go back in their budget then?
Yeah, it has to flow through their budget, so we're gonna try to make arrangements for payments to come out of the budget.
Okay, so, so it's not gonna come, so some of that won't come out of capital, it'll just come out of their budget. Okay.
Yeah, we're supposed to get a contract amendment from them.
Okay, that helps with my quarter, right?
Okay. Good. Where are we at now? InformaCast?
Century Link InformaCast renewal.
Brian.
So, bring it in. So this is just, this is the maintenance contract for the forecast for the sheriff's office.
You look so excited about this, I mean...
I was worried because I didn't ask if I could approach this time.
You kissed my ring.
You're doing this for the sheriff?
I guess so, yeah.
What'd he, what'd he buy ya?
Nothing.
Do you wanna wait till after Friday, Chris, to discuss this again?
Or you'll know.
So anyway, but there is no increase to it. It was just a normal annual maintenance agreement.
Okay. All right, we gotta sign it.
Okay.
I move that we approve the, and sign the services agreement with Century Link.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Uh, oh, now we get to have fun. Discussion of EMS scheduling pay grid. I wanna know when you sleep, huh?
Not often. We just woke him up.
He was back there having a nice little nap, relaxed.
So as you gentlemen are aware, we've been, uh, looking at the different scheduling options, uh, to try to increase the number of ambulances on the road, but also to, uh, reduce the number of paramedics that it takes to also do that. So with that is a hybrid system, which will put, uh, peak hour units at the busiest times, uh, during our system and deploy those. Uh, right now it's, we have the approved positions for, uh, two and a half, and we've discussed putting on those extra two to make it a full three peak units deployed. And then it'd be five twenty-four hour units, um, that'll work a modified Kelly schedule. Uh, by doing that, it reduces the number of employees that you need from eight to six for those twenty-four hour units, um, in order to accomplish that same, uh, time. So we're actually be able to increase the number of units deployed on, in the streets to the citizens, um, by out-incurring a large increase in employees for that same, so. Questions about that, sir? So the way the modified Kelly works is it's an on a day, off a day, on a day, off a day, and then you're off four days. Uh, so it only requires three shifts, uh, A, B, and C shift to do that. So, one week, um, basically, the way that it plays out is that the, uh, they get their twenty-four hours off in between, so it's a basically a five, five days schedule if you'll count their in-between days off, um, and then they go on their four days. So it's a very common schedule.
I'm good with moving forward with the proposed schedule. I think we need to talk about some pay issues and stuff in closed session before we approve the pay grid, but anyway.
So we can tentatively approve this until we have a closed session?
Yeah, I'm, yeah, I'm good with the schedule. I think we just need to, you know...
Yeah, I've been looking at it. You've been giving us plenty of information on it. I'm still not crazy about twenty-four hour shifts, but in talking to you, you sold me on this hybrid system and with the market demand, I think that you made a, a good sale on why we have to do this, so hopefully it works for everybody.
So the biggest thing is there's a nationwide shortage of paramedics.
Yeah.
Um, it doesn't mean that, uh, they're not recruitable, it's just a matter of they're in short demand, uh, or high demand. And so we need to look at how we can continue to serve the citizens and still be able to recruit and maintain the, the needed coverage, so.
Yeah, I think we're all good with that, yeah.
Okay, yeah.
Okay, appreciate it.
Yep.
Yep.
Am I done?
Dispatch server upgrades.
Don't go nowhere.
Yeah.
You're on to them.
I tried. Um, so as you're aware, we've discussed that the, uh, dispatch CAD system that we're using currently, one of the things that my understanding is, of course, I wasn't here, was is that it was, uh, the understanding of the individuals, uh, when they made the recommendation, that it would do what's called a recommended unit or closest unit, uh, allocation. It does not do that. What it does is it relies on, uh, what are called run cards. And in the run cards, there are predetermined or pre-established order, if you will, of the units that would get dispatched. Unfortunately, what's happening is, is that within that box, so you could technically have a unit that's two miles away and a call that's, there's that dividing line between those, those zones or those run cards, and the system is not picking the closest unit, it's picking the one it believes is supposed to go there. So it defeats the purpose of the A V Ls, automatic vehicle locator devices in the system. So with this, um, the server upgrade, they have to have a G I S server, um, upgrade through them. It's a virtualized server. Uh, what that will do is, is allow the A V Ls to be queried, and then the system will automatically pick, um, or recommend the closest unit to the emergency. The dispatcher will then select that recommended unit and then they can dispatch it. So this should help our response times, um, by ensuring the closest unit is available or is recommended and sent. Um, I don't think it's a huge problem that we have, um, but I do think when the system starts getting busy and the dispatchers are taxed, that this does help reduce any type of error in that. Um, also, in, uh, the bid is the reconfiguration of the system. The system is not configured the way that I, um, believe after studying it for a little while it should be. Um, so there's some antiquated, uh, things inside of it that were set up or, um, selections that probably shouldn't have been, um, to ease through the call-taking process. Some of the fields are still enabled, so the dispatchers have to go through, try to tap through them, see if they need that field or not. So there's ways to reduce that time as well. And then, um, the training, unfortunately, um, previously there was what's called stove piping. One person had all the information and they were the only person with the information. So we need to increase our ability to have more than one person be able to administer the system, but also understand the system in a greater, uh, capacity. So that's also included in this bid. So the training for the CAD, it says remote. I have from them that the reason why it says remote is just so that they could offer us a lower price to come onsite. They will spend three days onsite helping configure and train, um, that process. So really what we're doing for this thirteen thousand six thirteen is we're getting three days onsite training for, um, our, our individuals. We're getting this, the G I S server upgrade for the automatic vehicle locating, and they're gonna come in and help reconfigure the system to a more user-friendly and system-friendly, uh, process. I think this is a good deal. Um, as we've discussed, that I think this is our first step in, in truly identifying if this is the right system that we should have or should have had. Um, so I think this is ultimately that first step to make sure this works, that it was, in my opinion, a cheap way out to make sure that we get what we're supposed to be doing. Questions, concerns?
No, we just need to do it, yeah.
Now, was thirteen thousand six thirteen?
Uh, yes, sir.
Okay, I was going through some of your emails, trying to keep up with.
I think I forwarded it to you last night. I might not have, I don't remember. It was late.
I don't think so.
Uh, that might've been yesterday, the briefing one. Was it in that?
Uh, it was not, but I can forward it to you now, actually. I actually have it, so...
I'm good with it, you guys?
Yeah.
Yeah, I would move with it.
The discipline came in a little bit higher, and we were able to get that lower. The, the one we were able to save the most on was the onsite training, so.
So do we need to, uh, is this through Zerker?
This is through Zerker, so there's, um, and they're the only ones that are able to provide those services to us.
So do we need to advertise sole source or...
You do. Just put the notice in the text in for just putting it in the paper.
But we've already got the Zerker system. This is just an upgrade. So why would we bid somebody upgrading their system that they can't upgrade anyway? So I would...
That's why it's sole source.
Well, the Zerker system itself is sole source, but upgrading it is no source. Nobody else is gonna be able to do it.
True.
We do the same thing with Century Link. When, when they have upgrades or whatever Brian wants to put on it, and Jennifer just, all you simply do is just put a notice of sole source purchase in the paper.
Close your ears, Jeff.
Turn newspaper.
But we gotta spend three hundred dollars to have people tell us nobody can do this. So, it's not your fault, Jeff. It's state statute.
It's a scam by the newspaper law.
Are you getting, are you getting this buried?
Tell them it's gonna be a special election.
Are you, are you getting this buried?
We just advertised right there. Run that on the news, Barry.
Okay, so...
Tweet it out.
Okay.
I don't, I still don't see why we should have to advertise that. You can't, they can't upgrade it. There's no way anybody'd be able to upgrade. If we're gonna do some kind of advertising, it'd be for the service, period. So we're gonna re-bid the whole thing?
No, the statute just simply requires a notice of sole source purchase.
What you're saying makes too much sense, so just...
Well, that's why it's sole source, because nobody else can do it.
I don't normally like to argue.
I know you don't.
I know that's not true.
Trying to drink coffee.
And I love snacks, so...
I'll have Jennifer talk to you, especially about what it actually is.
Yeah.
If it's just a...
Well, it's not rocket science. It's simply, you know, we, Jennifer and I put together something small for Century. It just...
Yeah.
Shouldn't be...
I guess, I mean...
An ordeal.
Guess if you're not keeping me from going to jail over this. I still don't agree with it.
Arrest him.
But I don't agree with a lot of states.
Take him to jail.
It's not jail. You gotta worry about getting sued.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
What are they gonna sue me for?
Or draw from office, which is a big one.
All right, I move that we approve the dispatch server upgrades.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Discussion and approval of EMS training.
Uh, I'm not sure. I think that goes with the training officer and some of the new positions. Is that kinda all together?
That's all together, sir.
Okay, so we can just talk about all that together.
I got the discussion of EMS new positions.
Okay. So basically you got some dispatch positions you need.
Right, so we currently have two dispatchers on twelve hours a day and one dispatcher on twelve hours a day. Um, A, I think that's, um, probably not smart for us to be doing for various reasons, and I think that's an immediate need that we need to address. Um, so if we can move with that one, that would be extremely helpful to the system.
Okay.
Uh, the other positions were the two positions to complete that peak hour truck. Those are the two, uh, positions that we'd like to fill so that that unit is, uh, on duty, uh, every day of the week, um, that we had previously discussed about. Um, that, that eighth unit only having half the, half the staff, just doing those other two positions so that now it's every day. And then the other two positions, uh, since, uh, Mr. Vance is retiring, uh, converting one of those into either a logistics officer or a training officer, and then, uh, having a discussion and looking for, uh, your recommendations on the other half of that, either the training or the logistics side of it. All of them have, uh, risks and benefits to the system as far as why we need those positions. Uh, training, I wanna make sure that our staff is, you know, continues to be trained, uh, and increase our training, uh, into a, a level that, uh, we probably need to be at. The logistics side is going to help with Mr. Vance, especially retiring with the fleet maintenance. We need to change some of the fleet maintenance processes. Uh, generally what that individual also does is they take care of some of the I T items, uh, they take care of the medical supply ordering and stocking, uh, within the warehouse. So generally they're also good at, uh, through time, they're getting the, the best equipment that's needed at the best price. Um, so they generally, over time, you'll see, um, they'll help minimize their salary or even make up their salary by the, uh, reductions. One of the things that I also have my logistic officers do is they're responsible for grant, uh, looking at grants and trying to write those grants, or at least, uh, assisting in those grant-writing processes. Um, grants can take a lot of time. Um, I just don't have time to do that, uh, on a consistent and regular basis, so I think that's an opportunity as well for them to be able, uh, to help offset their, their salaries. Uh, it's, your system is kind of at that sweet spot where you don't need a ton of administrative staff, but you are understaffed administratively for this, um, for the size of the county and the calls that we run. So, uh, both are very important positions. Um, if we need to wait for a budget year for one of them, uh, we can look at doing that. Um, I'll defer to you guys on that part of it, but I do, um, since we are converting one of the positions, 'cause we only need three supervisors now instead of four because of the twenty-four hour rotation, uh, that one is covered through that salary, and then it would just be the salary of the other person.
Well, dispatch, we've got to take care of that.
Uh, we talked about the difference between logistics and the training officer and trying to figure out which one carried the more weight right now. Neither one really jumps out. I just thought whichever one thought possibly advertise for both and see which one, if, if they both have somebody that comes through the top of, of the cream of the crop, I mean, we may want to look at filling in both them positions immediately, but if not, then I think just fill one of them. If you find somebody that's capable, not, I'm, I agree with you, don't just fill it to fill it.
No, I think we need logistics. We need logistics officer.
I was leaning towards logistics 'cause they're possibly gonna kinda help pay for themselves by taking care of all the supplies and stuff, so...
They also will be responsible for, right, the, the maintenance side of the house, making sure that those things are appropriately being done within the process. So, um, record-keeping, you do have liability anytime that you're not keeping records, um, of, you know, the maintenances and things like that. So that position's really important to ensure that from the county standpoint, we're covering, um, those bases to ensure that we're also meeting the statute, but that we're also legally covering ourselves to, to show that we're, our units are ready to respond, um, and safely. So, um, I agree, I won't fill a position just to fill it. I'm gonna fill it with the right person, uh, with the right qualifications to do the, to do the job.
So both of these, uh, training and logistics officers, they would be medics or...
Yes, sir. So generally, um, A, I believe in that, the, the progression up through the ranks. Um, it's a stepping stone, right? So from E M T, you go to paramedic, paramedic, you go into either supervisor. There's different tracks, right? So, uh, some will go into the training track, some will go into more of that logistics side, and some stay in that operations side. Um, and so most people, when they start that promotional process, kinda pick the track they're generally gonna stay within. Um, and so, most people, when they start that promotional process, kinda pick the track they're generally gonna stay within. Doesn't mean they can't move within the tracks, but generally, you'll see them stay within those tracks. Having a non-medical person, to me, is not an option because of the medications and the different concentrations, and if they're not understanding, that's gonna cost us money. From an EMT versus paramedic side. While some EMTs are able to understand, you know, kind of the differences in the paramedics' aspects, the advanced life support care. I think that with, especially the way medicine's changing now and the technologies and things like that, that I generally believe that that is a stepping stone for a paramedic. Because the EMT needs to step into that paramedic slot first. So, I would recommend that they both be paramedics. The training officer has to be a paramedic.
I mean, I, I don't know how you say one's more important than the other, because I mean, I mean, obviously, we're looking at total positions, but. I mean, I think that we need to get up to speed on our training. I, I think that, you know, there's, uh, there's some things that we purchased that we don't even know how to use. So, I mean, that's, that's concerning to me. I agree. I mean, without the fleet running, I mean, you're, you're, you're dead in the water, so I mean, if your trucks ain't running, then, you know, you might as well not have anybody come to work, so. I mean, I think logistics is probably slightly more important, but I, I think that the training officer needs to be found. And even if we start looking now, we may not fill it for eight weeks.
I guess James was the last training officer.
And with the new requirements.
We officially had.
With the new requirements into the state, especially with Senate Bill eight seventy coming on and getting approved, that training officer's going to have some time to ramp up. It's not going to be a, they get turned on and things start getting trained right away. They're going to have a process and a, a accreditation process for the agency as well. So, that's, that is a time-consuming process for that. I would love to tell you one was more important than the other, but I'm kinda with you guys. I, I don't know how to pick that.
So, to me, the two open positions to complete the Kelly, the modified Kelly schedule, I mean, if we want. I mean, we gotta do that if we're gonna do the three twelve-hour shifts.
Yes, sir.
Right, and I, Debbie, you did the, or did you both work on the budget exercise part of it that said there was gonna be a minimal change to the actual salary line?
That was with the new positions.
Okay, so the new positions, we need to just look at that and see where that puts us. So.
Well, so that one of the discussions was, is it because we can't do the twelve-hour and twenty-four-hour crossing over? If you put both of the missed paramedics, that gives you more capability that, to give you people to, to fill either role. On the flip side, you can do an EMT and a paramedic, and you're okay either way.
Daniel's shaking her head ass.
There's, there's a couple of different ways to slice that. So. Medical will be harder to fill, right, just because of the shortage in EMT. I mean, I've got those waiting in the hopper to, to bring onboard, so. I'm, I'm okay going either way. One offers more flexibility, but I think that if we decided that it wouldn't be a paramedic, one be an EMT, like the rest of the aspect of things, I think that's okay.
Is there, is there any way to stagger those dispatch shifts? I mean, so that we wouldn't necessarily have to have two on it? I mean, obviously, ideally, we'd like to have two on it all the time, but is there a way to?
Nah, not in meet the proper intent. So, right now, you have a, a vertical dispatch process. So, that means the call taker is also the dispatcher, which is also, right, so. An example I will give you is the person that is dispatching the units is also giving CPR instructions, and when that second nine-one-one call comes in, you have one person. So, I don't think that that's really a viable option to continue to have one person on. I think the, the more prudent process in this is to at least have two around the clock. You will still be in a vertical dispatching process because of that staff number. Ideally, what you want is a horizontal staff where you have call takers and dispatchers. The dispatchers focus on the units and the processes of moving trucks, and the call takers focus on the citizen calling. It's not uncommon to have a vertical dispatching process, especially while you're growing an agency in the process with that. But at some point, I think you need to look at that. One of the good things is, is that we're looking into that cellphone charge that either just got passed or it looks like it's about to be passed. Where we can, we just have to submit a plan and then hopefully be able to do that. I believe it's a dollar, so.
Yeah. No, I think we, we've gotta, we've gotta take care of the dispatch. That's.
I would say if you didn't do anything else today, those two dispatch positions are the highest priority.
So, if we're putting these extra ones on. And when we made some changes before, we were told that our revenue was gonna increase. We're gonna capture a lot more transfers and so. While it's gonna cost us a little more to start off with getting these in there, we would recognize some more revenue. So, I'll put you on the spot here. Do you see that coming up? We got.
So, I think it would be irresponsible for me to say that you will catch a, a lot more revenue with that, because what you have is, is you have, you have a call volume because of your distances and your transfers. And the way the call types are, that your system needs those, that extra truck at night and that extra truck during the day to maintain its current. We currently still give transfers away to neighboring agencies to accomplish that. In order to accomplish all the transfers, to truly see that revenue increase, you would have to then staff to the transfer side of this as well. Which ideally, in that respect, would be, the way I would recommend moving forward on that is do a BLS transfer unit for twelve hours a day to see what we realize and the capabilities of that. If it's successful and continues to move forward, then I think we go to a twenty-four hour op, not twenty-four hours around the clock as far as the same people, but twelve hours for that transfer. But I would not start with that model yet. I know that that's part of the staff's concern, is the amount of transfers. And not necessarily the volume, but the distances and times that they're being asked to go do those.
So, the training officer, we were talking about billing and stuff. If stuff's not coded just right.
Oh, you'll lose revenue left and right.
So, is the training officer the one that takes care of?
They're the ones that.
They're trainers, that.
Yes, sir, so that what they do is.
That'd be one person. That'd be trying to recognize that much more.
So, that person is responsible for reviewing trip sheets, looking over them, ensuring that it's properly documented. Right, I've told all of our staff that we don't lie on trip sheets, but under documentation, meaning that they don't put down, right, if you, you know, start IV and give two medicines, and you don't document that, you're not getting reimbursed for it. Yesterday, I wrote off nine hundred and ten dollars because it wasn't documented properly. So, you extrapolate that out, you're, you're gonna have yourself an issue on your hands. So, they're responsible for that. They're also responsible for the QA-QI process, which is quality improvement, quality assurance process. And so, what they do is they go through, they look at the different trip sheets and things like that. Ideally, in most agencies, they have a specific person to do that. I don't think you're at that point right now, and I think there's a technology solution to not have to incur an additional staff for that. But state statute does require us to have a quality insurance and quality improvement process in place. We do have a process in place. I won't call it robust, and so I would say that this person will help ensure that that picks itself up a little bit more. There are opportunities to improve.
And if we bill improperly, we can't come back later and say, oh, we, we got to put the wrong code down.
Well, what I'm getting at is if we can justify the two positions, we need them. But how would justify paying for them? So, if we're, if we're losing nine hundred dollars a day.
So, it's not a day. So, it's not a day, right? So, I, I won't tell you that. It's not a day.
Well, it could be worse than nine hundred.
It could, it could be.
Could be zero, could be eighteen thousand. I don't know, but I'm just using this pretty number because it's a round number. And I'm gonna round it to a thousand. Even if it's a thousand dollars a day, you're thirty-six thousand dollars a year right there that you pick up. You talked about our billing company. We gotta address that too, because you feel like we're being overcharged for that. We need to rebid that. That's been, I think.
So, we're near seven. We're, we're paying right now nearly seven percent of the collections. That's high. So, I think that that is an opportunity that will help realize the savings.
Well, we're looking at around nine thousand dollars a month, I think, if my math is anywhere close.
I paid twenty-one thousand yesterday.
So, which is more than what we should be paying.
And we have some missed billings too. We don't even bill.
Right, so.
It is what, to me, that, you know, if we're negligent on, on billing, that's not, that's.
Yeah, so, um, we're in the process of now starting to review calls to ensure that all trip sheets are filled out and properly submitted for billing. And so, I think it's an opportunity to collect some funds as well back into the system. So, do I think long-term that you're going to see at least a break even, if not an improvement? I do. Based on what this person, it will not be immediate, because again, we have to stand up the process, but I do believe that you will see a benefit long-term. Not only from a cost savings, which is important, but to me, more importantly, is the level of care and education that our employees receive. So, from that side, from the education side, I think that's important.
Yeah, and I just wanna be very clear. I'm not looking at this from, we're trying to make money on this. It's a, it's a service we're providing. I think we're concerned about the liability and the dispatch. I would tend to agree with you that that is gonna be a liability. If it's my mom or grandma or somebody that is the second nine-one-one call, I wanna make sure they're getting equal treatment. Uh, same with the training and logistics, so.
Well, anytime we've talked, you've never brought the money up as far as being a concern, so.
Yep. I don't, I think we probably all just go and fill them spots. I mean, Debbie, we've got it, we've got it in there, contingency or not, to add to the salary line. And then, to advertise for the two positions and see what comes up.
So, my guess is you'll probably be looking at probably a two-month cycle before you can probably get a training officer select, in and selected. So, you're, you're probably budgetarily, at least for the training officer, you're going to have a minimal impact budget-wise. Logistics officer, um, my goal is to try to get both of them internally. I think logistics officer may be easier, but it doesn't mean that that opportunity for both aren't there. One of the things that we'll do is, is to minimize the impact of a lost paramedic into the system, is that we will slowly transition if they come from within the system into that position. While their replacement is hired and trained, then they will start to assume more of their administrative duties.
So, if we, um, this is kinda outside of those positions, but obviously, you, you talked about a transfer truck, and is that a seven-day-a-week transfer truck, twelve hours if, if we were to start that road, or?
So, you can, you can do it. So, some systems will do it Monday through Friday and do, you know, the, the eight-hour thing. I don't think the eight-hour thing, I think we've discussed before, generally, you have thirty minutes to forty-five minutes to get in service. They don't normally take a call, you know, going out of the area within the hours, so really, your, your time on task is not very efficient with that eight-hour shift. Especially given your geographic location. If you're in an urban area, it's easy to do a quick trip. This area, it's not. So, I would say that you probably would wanna start with the twelve hours a day, seven days a week. Is it something that we can kind of look at and adjust? I think that there's an opportunity. We probably, we might be able to do four-ten's, depending on the high call volume days. Right, there are those opportunities that I think that we can look at how we stagger those trucks or truck to do that. There's just a lot of different ways to kinda skin that cat. I think the idea is, is that if you're gonna be, my opinion, we've discussed, you know, some of this, is if you're in the transfer business, you have to staff to it. Because what you don't want it to do is impact your nine-one-one capabilities. And again, we're giving away transfers to other agencies.
And that should pay for itself, basically.
So, you would realize, you should be able to realize that.
Yeah.
By picking those back up. One of the things that we currently don't do are critical care transports. That is an opportunity that if we did critical care transports, true critical care, where we build for a critical care process. Those are, those, those are opportunities for increased revenue.
So, a dedicated ambulance that does critical care. I mean, it's all got all the stuff in it, not necessarily.
So, you would want it to be dedicated, because there's a lot of different things that they would have. I think that we're able to do that currently. The monitor's different. I mean, there, there would be a cost incurred for that because of just the, the vent, the monitors, different things that you would have to have to meet that standard. The training part is part of that, though. They have to be critical care certified paramedics. We'd have to write some critical care protocols. Again, that's not something we would stand up immediately. It would be something that, like, we would get approval to start doing, and then that process would take time to, you know. Again, it would take several, several months to get that moving and going, so, um, I'd rather be methodical while we do this. I don't wanna just throw something together and do it wrongly.
I think to your point, Jeff, though, I mean, by having a transfer unit, you are gonna realize more revenue by not giving away the transfers. So. I think that's something that we definitely have to work with the local hospitals and, and, and figure out, you know, some type of an agreement that works good for both parties and just a better working relationship and. So. I think it's something that we should definitely look at.
Yeah, I like the idea, and we bought that transit just for that reason, and we're still not using it, and I'm like.
So, that would be the unit that they.
Yeah, that would be.
That would probably be about fourth or fifth down on your list right now. That's not really causing a liability. I feel like.
Right.
It's not a liability. So, it's not a liability.
I think dispatch is.
Dispatch is number one.
Could be a problem.
Yeah.
Training logistics, I think, goes both way about the same in my mind, so.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I think we need to move ahead with that.
So, on all of them?
The good thing is I won't come back at budget and be asking for a bunch of people.
I'm sorry?
I won't be coming back at budget time and asking for a bunch of people.
You're gonna make him say it a few times.
John just sits here and smiles.
Hey, he said that before too. I, I promise you, I won't come up next year and ask for this, so. Right before the end of the year, he comes up and asks for it, and I said, what, you said you weren't gonna come back next year? No, I'm asking this year.
I didn't come the next year.
Yes, he plays well in the sandbox.
You're good with two dispatch people?
I don't need to.
There's two, right?
Yes, sir.
Make sure we got that all.
Good with filling the open positions to complete the modified Kelly?
That would be two and a half?
That's two.
Two.
The two and then a half to fill the.
Right, so it's, it's, we have two and a half units that we can deploy in the peak units, so there would be two positions to complete that third one.
Are those two EMTs or the paramedics?
The two open positions?
Yes, the, the modified, could be a case for the paramedics.
Right.
I'm okay going medic, EMT.
I'd like to fill them with two medics, just 'cause I think it makes it more flexible. So, I mean, you get somebody that calls.
I'm fine either. I just.
I'm betting for now, it's gonna have to be a medic, 'cause I don't, or a EMT. I don't, you're gonna be able to find that many paramedics. Eventually, I think it would be desirable to have two paramedics, but.
So, one of the things that we can do is if we do the EMT and medic now, with the people that we have on our staff that are going through paramedic school, we can transition that process and move them, right? We can kinda move them around if, for budgetary purposes. Ideally, because we can't have them cross over, we'd like them to be medics. But in that interim, if we need to, in order to accomplish that and not have that spot open, I kinda thought about that on the drive over this morning.
I mean, I, obviously, medics are hard to find. By leaving it open as a medic position, now you've got a twelve-hour shift with two medics on it. Somebody calls in sick, something happens, you fill the truck. You can, we can easily find a medic or a EMT to come in and, and help staff the truck. It's a whole lot harder to find a medic to come in, so it gives you a lot more flexibility. Maybe they work only a half of a twenty-four-hour shift, but it, it gives you a whole lot more flexibility, and then you have kind of that pool of an extra medic that can take a full-time shift.
It's basically like having those floats that we talked about, but on the twelve built into the schedule instead of just kinda sitting there not in the process, so.
Well, yeah, like I said, I'm, I'm, I'm fine either way, but if, yeah, if you can get two paramedics, that's, that's great. If you can't, then. If you can't, then.
And if it's, and if it's authorized at a paramedic and it's an EMT currently, right, I can downgrade that during that shift and then as we get the medic upgraded, that's an option as well.
But I just think that we should budget it for a medic just because it gives you greater flexibility there to fill an extra truck.
Yeah, that's, I'm fine.
And I think, I think we should fill both the training and logistics officer too.
Yeah, I, yeah, I think they're both important, so.
Debbie's over here biting her tongue.
Now, we had a lot of people apply for the dispatch position and, didn't we?
Yeah, we did.
So I don't think filling those is going to be that hard.
So I, I've asked about that yesterday. They weren't sure.
Okay, well, it's, it's probably been long enough too that we just need to advertise or.
We'll re, we'll redo that. So normally, what you'll see, what I've experienced is, is for every 20 applicants, you'll get one that makes it through the process, so.
Well, yeah, just because we had 20 applicants doesn't mean some of them were.
Right.
Just off the street and applying so they get their check for unemployment.
So, and some of the things we can do is I have EMTs that want to be, come into the service full-time. One of the things I can do is send them to EMD school and have them become dispatchers, right? And then that creates a funnel into the 911 side of things as well, so less recruitment costs.
Which patch do they get if they're both?
One on each shoulder.
As far as the training and logistics, I'm waiting for Debbie's head to explode. I mean, I think go ahead and, and train, or, not train, but advertise for them. Let's see what we get.
And really, you're just going to have the one budgetary impact because the other one is already budgeted, so.
So it's just one position, really?
Yeah.
And really, with the difference in that salary, because there will be a big difference in that salary as well, so.
Just make notes. You can let me have it later. So you want to just advertise for them or you want to fill them?
I say advertise for them and Matt has been very clear. He's not going to just hire somebody to fill a position, so I'm confident in giving him that direction to advertise.
So fill, fill one and then come back and if you get two applicants or?
Yep. I'd be more apt to say, hell, yeah, let's do this because we've got two people at the cream of the crop and we need to do it now rather than wait until they find another job somewhere else, so.
I think he just needs clear direction. I mean, what, what happens if he gets two candidates?
Then we need to fill them. I, I think, yeah, I think we, we need to fill them.
Fill both.
It's, this is, we brought you in to make it the best, make it the best.
And then make sure you keep on finding these little issues that we have where we're going to have money coming in or less expense so we can tell Debbie that it's going to be okay.
I think having a transfer.
I found a small area that we can reduce some expenses already.
If that, Debbie, you're all going to do dispatch.
And you have them find grants, you know, like Christie found the grants. You have them find grants.
You're going to have them hires that are going to be looking for them, so.
I think we're.
Who else needs something today? Well, I'm about done with the yeses. I'm about ready for no's here.
You're up, John.
I'm pretty sure.
Better bring him a stack.
You getting hangry yet?
No.
Is there anything else on the agenda for me?
Yes.
Oh, he's still got more?
Yeah.
Okay, good. No. I haven't said no to one of them. What was it I'm saying?
I don't know. What's next?
Personnel, closed session.
Oh, okay. Well, that was just some salary stuff.
Anything else come before the commission today?
Anything else? Yes, 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 ma'am.
All right, I may as well go into closed session pursuant to Section 610.021 of the revised statutes of Missouri for personnel issues, sub 13.
Roll call? Yes.
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 Joe, what you got?
Just wanted to update. There's the, so I said.